...session tonight, this is May twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at us four thirty PM, and here in the Thomas J Smith Council chambers. Those of you joining at home, it is good to see you, and we hope you all had a great Memorial Day. We are shorthanded tonight for a short amount of time, Mayor Pro Tem's running late, and Councilman Rinker, he will be here a little bit later as well, but we are more than capable, lady, gentleman-
Absolutely.
-to get this party started. So, without further ado, we have Mayor's Awards next week, looking forward to those, and we have a proclamation for Juneteenth, Fred Sale will be coming for that. Number three is a public hearing, consideration of a sale of a portion of vacated alley right-of-way located north of three twenty Louisa Street. Mr. Tisdale.
This property was requested by the current owners to be sold upon review. It was found to be vacated in nineteen ninety-five by City Ordinance number three zero two seven. So, being that it's already been vacated, we just need to go through the sale process. The owner of three twenty Louisa also owns the two lots to the north of the alley as well. The home at three twenty is closer to the back property line, so this alley would be intended to be attached to three twenty to give some rear yard there. They do have an easement through their property to this property there, three thirty-one Lewis, but basically just selling what was already previously vacated by the council in nineteen ninety-five for five hundred dollars. It's owned by Carol Siegel, Keith Bonnet, and Janet, all good, all one-third interest. So, no issues on our end going through that.
What's that?
No, no issues on our end for the sale. It's already been vacated and gone through that process.
Peanut butter, you good?
I'm good.
Satisfied as well. Okay, number four is a public hearing, consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand and nineteen HMA street resurfacing project. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening. So, the projects or the plans and specs in front of you is for the, this year's HMA project. In the five-year road plan, we actually called out for Harrison Street work. Because of the work with some of the storm sewers that's involved, we've decided to try and do kind of an integrated plan, some of what you'll hear in a couple of weeks from now, kind of the story on that. But the HMA that we're looking at doing is, most of it is in the North Hill area. So, it's Eighth and Seventh, North and Franklin. You can see there's some delineation in the green is the primary bitted project. The white shaded areas are streets that will be listed as an alternative. Our price on HMA kind of has been up and down, so we use the higher end of the estimate. If we get a kind of a lower-end bid, we're hoping that we could award to do the rest of the work on there. And something that isn't on the map is the Southern Lane of Agency Street from where kind of our concrete ended with the project for, is pretty bad from Shields all the way to Curran. So, we would take that three hundred foot of the South Lane and redo that. We did have an SCG project get awarded for that, but that's four and a half years from now. So, to be able to get that up to better shape for the next several years, we're gonna have that as a part of this bitted project as well. He'd go to the next. So, the available funds is nine hundred and thirty-two thousand with the engineers' costs in there, estimate at nine hundred, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. We'll go out to bid here and then proceed bids back on July second, similar to the RISE grant. The RISE grant, you know, as you heard probably a month ago, had plans and specs come through, but the DOT had some tiny additions and changes they wanted to make. So, we'll probably bid this, the Seal Coat, and the RISE project out all at the same time. And I think that's it for that PowerPoint.
Questions? Okay, well, you're standing right there for number five, which is consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand and nineteen Seal Coat Street Resurfacing Project.
This Seal Coat project is kind of in the southeastern part of town. It contains Louisa, Denmark, and Sixth Street. You can see the green shaded areas are the sections that we'll be worried about. The reason why it doesn't go straight through is because of the pavement type that is in some of those breakup areas is actually concrete. So, throughout history, at some time, they've changed it to asphalt or concrete. So, rather than going in and changing that, we will just jump over those sections. So, this is south of kind of the locust area that you'll be hearing about a little bit of the conversation when we went out to bid. We'll start that project this summer, but you'll see some Seal Coat roads in there get redone as well.
Nick, you said that was Louisa, Denmark, and I missed the third.
The South Sixth.
Okay.
Louisa's in pretty rough shape. I know there's, I think Barrett's got some areas that are pretty bad too, but that's not in this project. This is road use tax. If you didn't jump to the next page, I think it's got the budget on it. Four hundred thousand dollars in available funds with engineer, three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars estimate, so a little bit of buffer room between.
We've got a couple spots that look almost like a war zone. Central Street from Angular to, there's a patch there that's just, it's just brutal.
That is a slated project for probably next year. It was originally thought as an HMA overlay. We haven't done any core samples on that road, but that project is from, it's all the way south to Harrison, I think, in our five-year road plan. So, Harrison Street is a little bit more complicated project than we initially thought. We're gonna just do an asphalt overlay on that. As we took core samples, that base is pretty shot, and then the curb work is also pretty bad. And as we started looking at doing a full concrete replacement there, we started to take a look at the storm sewers underneath, and that is an area, a lot of it, that needs to be separated yet through sewer separation or whatever we get for a consent order here in the next several months, something needs to be done there. So, rather than just go in there and do concrete work and then wish a year later that we hadn't done that yet and done it a little bit more thoroughly, we've kicked Harrison back to probably a calendar year twenty-one project, and Central will be bumped up to next calendar year.
Can we do, can we do the, the patch on Central in the meantime to get us through?
The patch?
Well, the cold patch or whatever you, the machine that we do-
Where is this?
Is, is there-
On Central.
Is your specific spot?
It's just really rough.
It's just from-
Well, I thought there was a couple holes in it the last time I was on.
There's a whole section between Angular to Harrison that's pretty bad.
Yeah, and I mean-
From curb to curb.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'd almost rather even see some gravel laid down than nothing to happen. I just think that needs-
There's some certain areas, I'll take a look at them, and I'll send street crews to take a look at what we can patch for temporary basis.
But I understand not wanting to spend a lot of money when we're gonna, when we're gonna be getting it down. Okay, I just wanted to bring that to you.
On your Seal Coat, I think you, I was talking with Jesse earlier. I think you have like three, close to three hundred thousand to carryover.
Correct.
Are you planning on possibly looking at doing larger than the four hundred thousand that was in the budget still?
Additional Seal Coat, unfortunately, to try and spec that out-
Because it's too late.
Now, probably wouldn't work out. We'd have to try and do that for a next-year-type project.
You guys good?
Yep.
Number six is a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning a portion of the property locally known as seven oh five Maple Street from C two General Commercial to C one Limited Commercial zoning district. Mr. Tisdale.
No changes from the previous reading. Again, looking to rezone the former Salter School at seven oh five Maple from C two General Commercial to C one Limited Commercial. This would allow some residential use of the property. It is still intended to be primarily a commercial property, but does allow the mixture of residential and commercial with the C one zoning. Most of the remaining property on Maple is zone C one, except for the Ferguson Plumbing Supply remains as C two. Planning Commission did vote six to zero to recommend approval of this change.
Good to meet you guys.
Could we, this is the second reading, could we waive it?
I'm with it.
Okay.
Yeah. Good job, PT.
Thought I would just come here for that one.
I knew you were gonna give your Jesse time, my friend. All right, we're good?
Yes.
Okay, let's move to the proposed consent agenda. First is resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Now, the second is resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the two thousand and eighteen HMA overlay project. Mr. McGregor.
This project from, is the HMA project from last year, and included Flint Hills Drive, Gertrude, and Groton. The reason why it's closing out now is there are some punch list-type items, some ADA compliance ramps that needed to be completed this spring. This project ended at five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Budgeted funds were six hundred thousand. This is out of the GO money. I don't exactly know why he put six hundred thousand, but we had like one point, we in balance, we have like a million two in balance. So, with engineering on there, it ends up being a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar project. So, everything seems to be doing pretty well, but just need to close it out.
Okay.
Close it down. You guys good?
Yes.
Number three is a resolution approving final acceptance and final payment for the two thousand and eighteen West Burlington and Agency intersection traffic signal detection. Mr. McGregor.
This project is actually kind of a two-part project for the Agency Street, which was the RISE project from West Burlington Avenue all the way to Roosevelt. Because the contractor that did the concrete work and all the other work didn't want to bid this, we had to bid this as a separate project. This was to Bazin Electric for forty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty to final this out, then we can close out the RISE project, which I know ABB is looking to do from a jobs position. So, this was a kind of a split project. It was overall two point one million dollars. TIFF paid for most of it, it was also RISE, but then West Burlington is also a split with them on the remaining portion, so.
You guys good?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Number four is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the two thousand and eighteen Depot White Box.
This project put in utilities and brought the space up to a rentable level by a potential tenant. We awarded contract to S and G Construction for a hundred and seventy-two thousand sixty-three dollars. I approved some change orders for some windows that got cracked in the meantime. Then we actually had a deduction from not having to fill out a city permit, ironically. And then there, I also included previous work, just so you have an understanding of what it took to get this space into a rentable level, bringing the total cost to two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, of which was paid for out of the Economic Development Fund, which was sales tax money, and then there's a seventy-five thousand dollar challenge grant that was awarded for this project, so.
Guys, good?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I know a lot of, there's some people who weren't happy with the fact that we didn't have somebody officially to rent that space, but for any sort of property owner, you should have it up-to-code kind of thing for safety reasons in general. So, even if, you know, since we didn't have a solid contract for somebody to rent that, I think it's probably appropriate that we try to maintain a property. I mean, that's kind of how I feel about the whole situation.
Also, the bottom line is, we own that building, which we, you know, we've gone through that, and it is always better to be prepared and not get the opportunity than to get the opportunity and not be prepared. So, now we're being prepared, we're in a position to where we can get a business in there, and for the dollars that it's spent, just as a reminder to let everybody know, preparation isn't free. To be prepared, it costs money. So, this is where we are, now we're prepared, and I definitely don't see us having any issues of getting somebody in there, so good for that, and we'll be moving forward with the depot. The councilors, are we good?
Yeah, I know there's some speculation that a group wants to go look at that white box space, and then that would free up a large building downtown to put retail in there. So, we might go look at it next week with a party that's interested to see if it'll meet their space requirements.
That was Jim Furno, he needs to spare a bedroom for his children. Number five is a resolution approving purchase of replacement of farm tractor for the wastewater treatment facility. Don.
As most of you know or may not know, I'm not sure, we do land application of our biosolids. That's the byproduct of wastewater treatment. And we have our own farm tractor and our own spreader, and we haul material to the fields. Fields have to meet certain criteria that the state has in the regulations. Our application rates have to meet certain rules and regulations. And our farm tractor, which we had purchased back in two thousand and one, a used AGCO Alice, nineteen ninety-seven tractor broke down on us the last time we were returning from a project that we had done. We tried to look into repairing the tractor. The main piece that was broken was not available. We couldn't get it as new, or we couldn't find it at a scrapyard. It was estimated that we could put nearly twenty thousand dollars into the tractor and end up, if we could find the part that we couldn't, and we still would know what we'd have in the end. So, we determined that the best thing to do would be to look to replace the tractor. We looked at some used tractors on the internet. In the meantime, we got approached by what we will call a local dealership to purchase a new Case IH tractor. Local company, good to support them, and they made us, gave us a rough quote on a tractor they could have had, we could have had right away that they would have had available, but as it turned out, that tractor's no longer available. But basically, they gave us what we would call a state bid on the tractor. There's a forty-two, approximately a forty-two percent reduction on the cost of the tractor. We looked at the internet, at comparable tractors that were five years old and had approximately five hundred hours on them. And those tractors that were comparable tractors to the new one, that had five hundred hours on them, five years old, were basically about the same price as what we would be paying for this brand-new tractor. So, we felt that, I know there's a cost to money, but we felt that this tractor would be the best thing for us to do, is to look at buying a brand-new tractor at this state bid price, and if we were to decide to trade it off or sell it, say, five years from now, we'd just about get our money out of what we paid for it. The cost of operation in the next several years, we'd basically, the cost of operating, maintaining the tractor, and we just felt that this was the best way to go.
So, the other, the old one was nineteen, nineteen ninety-seven?
Nineteen ninety-seven, and it's an AGCO. It's one of those brand tractors that have been sold and resold the company.
You get twenty-one years out of this new one, I'll be fine with it.
But this is a, we feel this is a very, this would be a very, very good purchase for us.
So, Don, what would the approximate operating maintenance costs be for the new tractor?
Well, we don't feel that it would be very much, probably less than, I mean, we, it's a diesel. We don't run and run and run and run and run the tractor. The tires will last a long time since we're, the tires are affected by how much driving you do on gravel roads and such. We don't do a lot, a lot of driving that way, so the tires should last us for a long time. I would guess that we're talking about less than five thousand dollars a year. That would be high for the operational cost of the tractor.
You good with that? I'm good. And PT?
Great.
One thing I will mention is that we don't have a tractor right now. We've had verbal discussions with the dealership about the possibility of having a loner between now and the time this tractor is available to us. And so, we've had some discussions there. We think that we can work something out with them, that it'll be a nominal cost of any cost whatsoever, as long as we don't put a lot of hours on the tractor.
Or tear it up, yeah.
Right. All right?
Thanks, Don. Number six is a resolution adopting the personal personnel manual for a non, it's personal, it's personal personnel manual for non-union employees. Sted?
Sure. So, in your packet was the manual, this is updated once a year, it's effective for July first. Basically, I didn't change any wording. What was updated was on page two under the salary adjustments. Well, I guess it wasn't even updated, because it was, it's the same as last year. It's budgeted, and what was budgeted for all the non-union employees was the two point, two-five percent. And then the salary schedule, which is the attachment A, those minimum pays and midpoint and maximums, that schedule, we do increase by two percent. And then that's where the employees, you know, we see where they fall, and then that's how their raises are calculated based on that. So, again, this was all calculated in the budget, this is just the formal approving of it, so.
Good. You guys good?
Good.
Thanks, Sted. And we have a public hearing set for June seventeenth for consideration of a proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement and to borrow money there under a principal amount not to exceed eight million one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So, we're really looking forward to that, which brings us to discussion items. First, we have for discussion items our treasurer's report, Annette, class of eighty-seven.
Okay, in your packet was April's treasurer's report, and I mean, I don't have a whole lot to say. Same things that I say every month, the things that are timing issues, and, you know, some of the grants are, we're waiting on reimbursements, but there's nothing that's out of the ordinary on any of the reports unless you guys have any specific questions.
I feel good. Council?
I'm good.
You do have a couple of deficit accounts that we're gonna have to worry about clearing up at some point.
The miscellaneous clearing account?
The miscellaneous clearing account is where our flood expenditures are at.
Correct.
That's, that's one where we'll have to wait and see how the process works. Were, we've been officially classified yet? No.
No, not yet.
So, depending on how that goes, that's a, that's a deficit that we, that, I mean, that we're gonna have to somehow account for. If we get FEMA funding, reimbursement would be in the eighty-five, ninety percent range. But until we get that, that's a liability that sits out there potentially we're gonna have to address out of our general fund next year, and we just need to be cognizant of that. Some of the projects that are outstanding, I think that we may have some deficit that we have to account for out of the brownfields.
Well, I don't know, I mean-
Depending on what we can do with closeout.
Right, exactly, and it's not gonna be very much there if it is, it's just-
Not very much like-
Like six thousand dollars, that's what I'm waiting to hear about. And I just haven't heard anything yet. But the other ones are like the challenge grant, the seventy-five thousand, we just haven't received it yet.
For the depot?
For the depot. I sent, I sent the information in April.
And the remainder of that we'll cover out of economic development.
Correct. Some of them are retainage, like our traffic, the traffic safety is, some of them are just waiting for those projects like on Agency Street to close out, and we'll get some of that money.
Agency Street East is gonna have a deficit account that we'll have to clear up with the, with the overlay. That's one that we're talk, Jesse and I were talking about. He wanted to make sure that out of the, the main overlay account that we had enough left over that we could cover whatever the final-
Why is that a deficit account?
We borrowed money for, out of TIFF. We used TIFF financing to cover a good chunk of it. It's not enough to cover what the final costs are gonna be. I mean, that's still sitting there, it shows fifteen thousand of cash available, but we're not closed out.
We're not waiting on, we're not waiting on any money that, okay.
No. We're just, we're just gonna have to cut, we, we're gonna have, and the costs were higher than what we had in the original budget, but we've got it covered out of another fund.
Right, on Agency, on East, correct.
But as we go forward, we're gonna, whether we get those, there's several of them that I don't know that will get closed out this year, but we'll have to do transfers to make up for us, to get them closed out. Out of, and they're all street projects, so.
Yeah, I guess the closeout process takes a while.
You guys good?
Good.
Thank you, Annette, class of eighty-seven. Next, we have our B Town Block Party. Victor Moore, come on down, come on up, have you come?
I'm Victor Moore, and I'm head organizer of B Town Block Party, put on every year for the kids of the community. And this year, I'm putting it on again, June thirteenth through August the eighth, every Thursday from six o'clock to, from six AM, six PM to six eight, six eight APM, I'm sorry, so.
That's a long party.
I don't know what happened to mine. Can you bring me another one? I don't know what happened to mine.
I don't know, I wonder if I can.
Did I forget to pass him down? Maybe? I, I think I got one there. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, like I said, goes on from six PM to eight PM, and do face painting, games, prizes, most of all, Bible storytelling, and this is what this is all about, leading these kids to Christ in the community, and trying to get them to a good, let God lead them into a good church home, and, and try to see some of these children, kids, you know, get them off the street and get them to a good church home, you know. Have kids that, that probably don't have a good upbringing in their house and stuff, and then we wanna reach out to them, you know, and get these kids into a good church and let them know that someone in the community cares about them. And, you know, this event is a great event, and I wanna see this event go to a higher hikes in this community. And it is a church organizational program, and have a new church that's involved with us now, Harmony Bible Church, that's coming aboard on this church, upon this event now. And we have a whole community, we have a First Assembly of God, and we have a Jewish Fellowship Church.
What's that? A new fellowship-
New Fellowship Church, so. Oh, yeah, so I'm looking forward to getting in, getting in West Avenue Baptist Church, and Pastor wants me to reach out to him there.
Good, good.
So, I'm looking to bring board as many churches as I possibly can to join in on this event and spread them out to different parks. And also have the Burlington Library coming aboard, you know, to come aboard this year and, and do some things with the kids this year too. Oh, and, you know, this, like I said, you know, this is, this is a good thing for the kids of the community, and I want to see this keep going as much as God allows it. Go and see his works and be, you know.
So, so are you looking for support from the council?
Yes, I am, looking for support for the council, see if the council could take part, take part in coming aboard upon this and try to do a donation to this, anything, try to help out with the kids or whatever they can provide.
I will be personally there this year. And I definitely would like to see some council members there. We had pizza, I don't know if they did at the other parks, but at Sanderson, we had pizza. The chief of police came by, we had to run him out of the park because he got reckless and ran his mouth. I don't think Jim, I don't know if you ever came to that one, but it was a good time. Yeah, I would like to see some council members stop by if I can, and that's a good thing. You can't go wrong with feeding some kids and teaching them principles. You know, I heard one person say, well, you shouldn't be promoting Jesus from a council meeting, but I've never, I've never heard anybody say, well, I'm so mad at you for teaching somebody principles to keep them from stealing my stuff. How dare you teach somebody not to fight my son, you know what I'm saying? So, no, it's a, it's a good thing to remind us that it's a community we live in, and we do need values and principles, and they start, and it does take a community to raise children.
Yes, we do, yes, we do.
Victor, how many years have you been doing this?
This would be my fourth year.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to doing many more years of this, and as long as God permits me to do it, so.
Wonderful.
Let his works be done in me, you know, so, throughout the community. So, it's good to have the city police department being a part of this, and just as well as the fire department, you know, coming out, you know, teaching fire prevention and teaching, and Burlington Police Department, teaching them about the laws.
And can you give that phone number for those that would like to be participants, would like to help out with- And can you give that phone number, uh, for those that would like to be participants, would like to help out with this, that would like to reach out to, uh, to Victor? Where, how can they reach you?
Uh, my number is three one nine five seven two four one seven four. It's also on my flyer. So, if you did get a flyer, you can get a copy of it off the flyer and, and, uh, you can contact me. And, um, I'll be willing to take your call. You can reach me after three. I work, uh, from six to, from six to two thirty. I don't make it back into town till, uh, three o'clock. I work down in Fort Madison and Seaman, so.
Okay.
Oh, uh, you reach me anytime after that, you know, I can ask you any question you like. I just had a meeting here not too long ago. Hard to try to get everybody together, but it came together, uh, without some of them being there, uh, but, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, seeing more next year. And we have the Optimist Club providing bicycles again this year. But I talked to Shawana and she's willing to donate three hundred dollars towards bicycles and getting bicycles from Nix Bicycles this year. We got it from, uh, Bickles last year, which had a little problem, a little mix up there, so we're not gonna go there again. So, we're gonna go to Nix and see how Nix worked out.
Okay. All right, so that's going to be, uh, June thirteenth to August eighth, every Thursday from six to eight. One park is Gladys White Park, you can help out at that one. Uh, one park is Stone Garden, uh, uh, on Valley Street, you can help out at that one. The other park is, uh, Sanderson Park. Uh, you can definitely help the mayor at that one, um, at twelve eight Valley Street. So, and you can reach Victor Moore again, three one nine five seven two four one seven four.
Right, correct.
Okay, I'm extra large t-shirt. Get my order in.
Yeah, so, I was just gonna say, I was just gonna ask you about that.
Okay.
Anybody else needs t-shirt?
Two X.
All right, just give it to him and I'll get you one.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And can you, uh, there you go. Thank you, thank you. Victor, we appreciate everything you're doing, man. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The community really appreciates that.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next, we have, uh, the Sewer Master Plan, H.R. Green.
Uh, I wanna do a little introduction, just to kind of give an idea. So, over the last year and a half, we've been working on the Sewer Master Plan. In your packets, you had like a hundred pages. I took out a lot of it for you. Uh, there's a lot of index type stuff, so, say what?
She already threatened us with it.
Oh, she did. Uh, so I'll, I'll let her take over. Uh, we told, just to kind of go over the basics of what it is. Uh, but from a staff perspective, there's a lot of information in here, um, that maybe won't get talked about, but we know about all the stuff in here, so.
All right, so I am Lauren O'Neil with H.R. Green. Um, I've been working on this project from day one. And, um, I've been with Green for nine years now, so, uh, had a lot of experience with, um, projects, sewers, water, what have you, so. So, um, what I'd like to do today is go over the plan that we put together. Um, I'd like to keep it as short and sweet as I can, but like he mentioned, this is the report. There is a lot of background information in there that helped us, um, come to our, uh, recommendations. But, and we include it in there for future use, but, um, there's still a lot of information in here, so I'll try to go on as quickly as I can. So, it's like a hundred and twenty slides quickly. I'm kidding.
That was a funny presentation. Thank you for coming.
Lauren O'Neil.
These are the topics I'll talk about. These are the sections of the master plan. Um, so, we'll start by talking about the purpose and the overall goal of the plan. And then I'll move through some of the background information, um, some of the tools we use to get to our recommendations. And then ultimately, we'll get to the recommendations and the part that you guys are gonna be most concerned about, which is the budget, so. So, here's our purpose. Our purpose is to make a roadmap for you guys, uh, for your sanitary sewer improvements. This moves into developing plans and specs, moving to construction, and then coming back around and verifying all improvements. So, starting with the master plan, this will help you plan out the way you wanna go. In addition, it's gonna help you with the EPA and the DNR, coming up with a plan that you can afford, that will be beneficial for the environment and will achieve the goals that you want as a community. So, that's where we're at. We're at, um, step one with this master plan. Not that you're not doing these other things currently, but step one for your sewers is to, to get an overall holistic view of your, of your plans. So, here's, um, your sewer in a, uh, high-level glance at what the basins look like. In general, is there a? This upper area here is the Hawkeye, Hawkeye Basin. Oops, sorry, that includes that pink area. That's the Hawkeye Basin. You have the blue area down here, which is Cascade. And then this middle portion right here is what we call Mazel, Market, Angular, South, and Locust. So far, uh, the Hawkeye Basin and the Cascade Basin have been technically separated. We're working on the Locust Basin right now. Uh, you have three more basins to go before you're completely technically separated. Um, with the Locust Basin, we approached it in a slightly different, uh, method. And I believe Matt Wildman has been here to talk to you about how we approached that, so I won't go into great detail on that. But in general, it's more expensive, but from our perspective, um, we'll leave you with a more sound, uh, sanitary sewer system, so. Um, I apologize, this doesn't, uh, show up as well as I would have liked, but, uh, does anyone know how many miles of sewer you have in your town?
Do tell.
A hundred and thirty miles of sanitary sewer, so. If you can think about that, that's a lot of sewers to maintain, um, televise, smoke test, take care of, um, fix when they break, all of those good things. So, that's what we took a look at, was where your sewers are now, what condition that they're in, and where you need to go next. Uh, you also have fifteen lift stations. So, these lift stations are critical infrastructure that move the sanitary sewer, um, uh, fluids and solids to the treatment plant, to where they can be treated and, and then discharged.
Look at Don. He loves to talk like this. Go ahead.
Don takes, Don takes care of them all, so, he gets it all. Um, some are more important than others, uh, with respect to how much they, they, um, pump. And, uh, but they're all important to each person who they serve, so. So, here are the lift station assessments. So, we took a, uh, we had one of our, um, engineers come out and take a look at the existing lift stations. And we gave them a ranking, one to five, and evaluated how they look from a, um, capacity perspective. Do they overflow? Are they able to keep up? Um, from a electrical perspective, are they with code or in code? Um, are they meeting all the DNR requirements for safety and, um, communications? Are they able to alert Dawn when something goes wrong, those kind of things? And, um, this is ultimately what we came up with. Uh, the higher the rating, closer to five, the worse it is. And you have Market, South, um, are the two main ones. And that being, um, well, those were ranked the highest because of their, uh, need for additional capacity, um, especially with respect to future growth, uh, which I'll discuss in a little bit too. Um, then you have, and the colors aren't showing up nearly as well here, but the, the three, four, and five are kind of in that orange range or the three rating, which are Fourteenth Street, Gulf Lane, and Volmer Street. Fourteenth Street has had issues of overflowing. It used to be a CSO location, um, and, uh, it has some capacity issues with high rain events. Uh, which is again why it's ranked up there high. The remaining, um, lift stations are, uh, ranked accordingly there. Uh, some of them need additional SCADA capabilities. Some of them need to be replaced because of the condition that they're in or the age, um, that they're reaching and just normal replacement. Um, uh, but in general, the main, the main important thing to see here is that Market, South, and Fourteenth Street are your first three that need to be addressed. So, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we also looked at future growth areas. So, not only are we looking at what you're taking care of today, or what Dawn's taking care of really, uh, today is look at in the future and, and where you guys expand, uh, plan to expand and how the sewers can handle that situation, um, right now. So, the three a- areas that were identified were the Flint Ridge Business Park, the southwest undeveloped area, and the undeveloped area southwest of the airport. Um, uh, as of right now, they're slated for commercial and industrial growth, um, so we evaluated them based on that assumption. We took a look at their stormwater, um, controls and, and management and as well as the sanitary sewer, uh, additional flow. So, here's the, the breakdown of the stormwater basins, if you will, for each of those areas. Um, Flint Ridge Business Park has five different basins. Um, this southwest area is into two, and this undeveloped area is into two as well. Excuse me. So, we took a look at those basins from a stormwater perspective as well. Uh, here, this is a nerdy engineering table, but what I'd like you to take a look at is the amount of detention. I, I included this because of the amount of detention that is required for each of these areas. So, as you move forward with developing these areas, um, it's important to keep in, keep in mind the stormwater management because that ultimately will affect your sanitary sewer as well. If you can effectively manage your stormwater through green infrastructure or proper, uh, storage, then you will have less issues with the I and I situation that you are currently seeing in some of the already separated areas. Um, so Flint Ridge Business Park does already have a detention basin within the, the basin outline. Um, it doesn't quite cover, uh, what we would recommend for the total amount of storage area, uh, I'm sorry, volume. Um, it's just a little bit shy, but all in all, it will, it will serve to, serve the area pretty well. Um, if you have the ability to add more in that area, that would be beneficial. Um, and then you can see the other areas are fairly large areas that would need additional stormwater management, detention to help, um, with those large stormwater flows. Here is the future growth for the sanitary sewer that we would expect. Um, for an average, A W W A there, or I'm sorry, A W W right there stands for average wet weather. So, in general, that's a pretty typical average flow. If you were to average the whole year, it would be a little higher than the average flow. And that's three point four million, sorry, three, almost three point five million, uh, additional gallons a day. Uh, the max wet weather flow would then add another fi- uh, not another, but would add five point two million per day. So, keep in mind, that's, um, that's on top of what you are currently seeing at the treatment plant. So, that would require additional treatment at the treatment plant if that is, uh, comes to fruition at that volume. So, in order to evaluate how these future areas would affect your current system, we had to get an idea of what your current system is seeing. So, we added some flow monitors and reviewed the flows that are currently going through your sewer system. And Matt came down and I think he, uh, went into pretty good detail about how that works and, and the results that we found. Um, but here again, I, this was shared with you previously, but this kind of indicates the, the peaks, um, that are seen during a rain event. This high dashed red line is what you see in an unseparated basin like Locust. Um, so you have in a rain event here, which is the blue, you can see the blue dots here are the, the rain, um, which came out to one point two inches. Um, you got a pretty high flow event at Locust. Now, because Locust is a combined sewer system, the majority of that water would overflow straight to the river. These other areas, um, which have already been separated, you can see have shaved off, um, a, a portion of that stormwater flow during that rain event. But still are fairly high with respect to the average flow, which would be down in this range, and the peak flow, which is up to here. So, a typical design that you would, you know, if we were engineers putting together a brand-new city, we would look at a peak flow of about four. So, um, that kind of gives you a, a good go-by as to maybe where you should be is under that five hundred thousand gallon mark for most of your flows, so. So, we took that flow monitoring information and we applied it to a model. The model was built off of your G I, J, G I S data, which was available to us from, from the city, um, from Des Moines County G I, G I S. And, um, we pared down that information because a lot of what your G I S is built off of is, um, previous, um, plans and a little bit older data. And so, in order to, um, make it as, as, uh, efficient as possible with, out having to, um, send a lot of people out to get the inverts of manholes and all of the, all of the nerdy information that I would need as an engineer, um, we stuck to the important tasks, which were the trunk lines. So, we pared it down to a little bit smaller model and we evaluated your trunk lines and how they are able to convey, uh, the sewage. I took a look at six different scenarios here, um, starting with the first one with, uh, the average dry weather flow. So, that would be your typical flow that you would see on a day-to-day basis without any rain. Um, we looked at a specific rain event to help calibrate the model. And then we applied a designed storm event of a two-year, twenty-four-hour storm. So, that would be effectively a, a storm that would happen over tw- twenty-four hours, that I believe was three point oh eight inches over twenty-four hours. Then we look at the future development, so applying that future load onto your existing system. Then we looked at the future development with our proposed improvements and recommendations. Scenario six is an alternative recommendation for, um, the area that is the, um, higher up the flow path on Hawkeye. So, it would be that Flint Ridge Business Park and those undeveloped areas, um, routing them in a little bit different direction. So, um, this is, uh, you can kind of see here, I've called them out, uh, and I'm not sure if this was information that was shared with them previously, but, um, this is the, this is the average dry weather flow. Now, this shows some areas that are red and have, um, all of these callouts are, are different locations that include areas that are red. And the red areas would indicate areas that are backing up or surcharging. Not necessarily backing up into someone's basement, but just maybe reaching the top of the sewer pipe. And this can be due to a number of reasons. Um, maybe there's some back slope to a pipe. Maybe there's, uh, slightly inaccurate, uh, measurement when it was measured. Um, uh, settling, this can occur, uh, in, in fact, in Texas, there's, we're doing modeling for one town that they've had manholes settle up to four feet in some cases because of the, the sinkholes and, and those kind of things. So, they have some, when, when I light up their, their dry weather, there's a lot of more red on there, so. Um, I think that most of these situations here, just from what I can glean from the information, probably could be, uh, rectified with a little bit more site investigation. So, most of these area, actually, all of these areas, I was not concerned with under a normal, uh, normal flow. So, on your everyday flow, this is not an issue. So, this next air, uh, map is a map of that specific rain event to which we've, um, calibrated the model. There's a few areas that back up. Um, one is right here, and this calls out two different lines here, so there's two different, uh, callouts for this one location. But that is just upstream of, um, the Lucas tank, which is there, which is a tank that was installed a few years back. And, um, the reason that backs up in that location is just because of the way that tank functions. So, there's not necessarily an issue there. It's not backing up into basements. It's just the way the, when the water overflows, um, the sewer, it flows into this tank for storage. And the, the reason the water overflows is because you have a regulator there. So, when the lift station downstream hits a point where it is having a hard time keeping up, these regulators will start to slow down and force the water into this, um, equalization basin. So, that's the reasoning behind that, um, area showing up in red.
Now, the specific rain event, was that two point one inches or three? I'm trying to remember what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I don't remember that specific rain event. It was a three fifteen. I think it was a little over an inch. I think it was an inch. I don't remember that specific rain event, it was a three fifteen, I think it was a little over an inch, I think it was an inch and a half maybe for that rain event.
Okay, okay.
So this is.
Is that typical, or it seems like we get more than that in a twenty-four hour period anymore? I know you're doing it for testing purposes, but.
Yeah, so this, the, the way we typically set up a model and we calibrate a model is for a smaller rain event. Um, it's just standard engineering practice to use between an inch or two to set up the model and calibrate it. Cause you have a few more instances of that happening, so that's why we set it up that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I would even say.
Go ahead.
It's, it's hard to, to do this presentation when this is trying to condense a hundred pages of, of stuff down.
Yeah, it is.
But like where she's pointing out there, that's a, a basin that's already been separated.
Yes, it is.
And when you think about what, what she said, a recommended uh peeking on a line would be what, four, four times your normal flow and this is, this line is more in that ten range?
Four. Typically. Exactly, yeah.
And it's, what it's essentially saying is, is that we might have separated it, but we did not separate it as far as what we really need to really adequately use that line.
Correct, yeah, so thank you for pointing that out. That was, that was one thing that we noticed a lot of is that those existing sewers and, and one of the reasons we are trying to attack that Locust basin in a sep- in a different alternative method is because you separated it and you met the consent requirement uh issued by the EPA technically. Um, but you now have a lot of flow that you're having to deal with in your older existing sewers. And also the Don then has to deal with at the treatment plant. So he's also having to treat every drop of that clean water that, that, that is then coming down the, the pipe, so.
And in some of these locations, now, we're not having a combined sewer overflow, but technically it's separated, so you end up with a sanitary s- sewer overflow.
Sewer overflow, correct.
Which is treated, regulated differently by the DNR and not liked either.
Correct, yes.
So we've created another issue by not addressing this to the extent that we really needed to have gotten it done on that side too.
Correct, yes, thank you. So um, so that is one location there that uh highlights after this lo- after or during this scenario. Another location is here upstream of the Gunnison tank for the similar reason. It has a flow regulator that will slow the water down and push it into the equalization. Um, there is also this area here, which uh could be due to a couple of reasons. Uh, it could be due to elevations or um, I think it was previously a, a siphon. And so it could be just, that's just how it works, um, and it, it's just designed that way. Um, so a little bit more site investigation could be done there to clarify that. But as far as we could tell, this does not cause an issue under a normal rain event. And Don can attest to that or, or not, yeah? Okay. Um, so that was the, those were the areas that we um kind of highlighted in, in this scenario. So then we move to that designed storm event, which is a two-year twenty-four hour storm above three inches, slightly above three inches. And you come into um some more issues. Now, the issues then that Jim was just alluding to would be overflows. And since these locations are separated, they are considered sanitary sewer overflows. Little bit higher concentration of the nasty stuff that you don't want, so. Um, it's flowing into the waterways and then out into the, the river eventually, so. You have a, a manhole here that is near the uh Lucas tank, or I'm sorry, that might be the Lucas tank itself, um, that overflows in this scenario. And then you also have the Gunnison tank here that would overflow in this scenario. They're designed to overflow, there is an overflow location for them, um, just because of the, the way this system is set up and the, and the flows that were being incurred, that this is uh designed to do that in some, in some form. So um, it's not causing any structural damage, but it is a, an overflow that the DNR does not like to see, so.
And in the, yeah, in the future, will there be fines maybe imposed by the DNR or something?
It depends on how um often it incurred, is incurred. So um, usually the DNR would rather work with a city to get it reduced or removed than they would to issue a fine. But if nothing is done, then yes, I, fines are definitely a, a tactic in which the DNR uses to achieve that, so. Um, the other location would be here, down at the mouth of Cascade. And uh, the, where Cascade ties into the interceptor that goes along the river over to the treatment plant, um, that is an area that is slated to have additional equalization. Right now, they're in the middle of that, so they just finished separating that sewer. They are then going to flow monitor it and add equalization there. And that will allow that sanitary sewer overflow to be eliminated, hopefully, um, in the near future. So that's uh, it indicated accurately what they're currently seeing before they get that, that EQ installed. So in the process of that work. Alright, that's it on this page. So a few more places show up when you add the future flows. Um. Yeah, there you go. Uh, this would be down here in this area that would be accepting future flows from the undeveloped area. Um, so this is a capacity issue that would need to be addressed prior to any growth or development down in those, those undeveloped areas. Now, um, we look at full big picture, this is not something that's gonna hit you at one time. You'll have time to grow and, and understand how that area is growing and you can update that as needed. But, so we, we looked at future flows, applied it at one time, added a rainfall, worst-case scenario, everybody builds at the same time and you have a huge rain. So that's what we're looking at here. And um, so that's what you're seeing in this area here is that um, that you would have capacity issues. So that would need to be um increased in size. Uh, and then likewise, you have additional issues down here by that Gunnison tank that we had issues before. So you're effectively just making the, the issue worse if uh nothing is done ahead of time, so. Scenario five was where we uh looked at the improvements we would suggest. Um, and, and how uh, what we would do in each location to help with this situation. Um, overall, INI has to be addressed. This can be done with um lining, it can be done with replacement, it can be done with smoke testing to find maybe direct connections that you'll see. Um, uh, an overall public awareness of what it means if their um sump pump can, is pumping into the sewer. Um, there's all of these items can be used to, to help you with that overall INI issue, specifically in the areas that have already been separated. So that's what we would, that's our first recommendation is to start a plan and we've worked with um the staff here to, to come up with a plan to um smoke test, televise, then locate areas that need lining. Line those areas, line manholes that may be our brick and don't have any mortar left in them. Um, those kind of things could be a step, a step-by-step process that can be accomplished every year to slowly chip away at that INI that you're seeing. Um, some other improvements that we recommended was uh some additional EQ in this area upstream of the Gunnison tank, um, to help slow that flow that's going to the Gunnison tank from a lot of this larger development, future development area. Uh, and I should mention, this is um with the future development flows applied. So this would be forecasting in the future, making sure that all of the flows can do what they need to do to get to the plant. The other area for improvement would be to this um Mississippi River Interceptor removal. So right now, there's a force main that runs from Cascade along the bank up to the treatment plant. And there are several neighborhoods that feed directly into that force main. Um, and what we would then recommend is to put a lift station here at Cascade and pump the water up uh shortways and then gravity flow to the south lift station, which would then pump it into the treatment plant. This means a new lift station here, an upsizing lift station for the south lift station. Um, and adding new smaller residential lift stations along the river here to serve those smaller um neighborhood communities that are currently fed into there. Um, one of the biggest reasons for this is not necessarily a capacity issue, but more of a um ease of access and environmental soundness um practice to get that out from along um the bluff and, and along the river there, which might be, or which is harder to access and to maintain.
As you're going through this.
Yes.
You have the, you have the improvements that you have called out on that map there?
Yes.
And they match to your table six-three? I'm not even sure where that is on the council packets.
It was six-three?
Yeah, it's, if the page numbers at the bottom would be like six, Roman numeral six dash six.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you wanna get an idea of the improvements that she's listing out and calling for based off, to try to address the different issues that are highlighted within our system, that gives you a table that categorizes them and gives you a perspective of the dollar amounts that are tied to them.
Yep, yep. So if you have that six dash six page, um, the, they're numbered here along the, uh, on the top of the page. And then the, the likewise number below with the estimated OPC is provided there, so. Um, so for instance, the improvement one, that rerouting of the Mississippi River Interceptor would be um somewhere in the neighborhood of the eleven million dollar uh cost, so.
And again, those are, as you have highlighted, those are in current year costs?
These are in current year cost and these are high level, so there's a healthy level of contingency in there. Um, just based on, you know, we're not sure what the scope of the project might include too. If you wanna break it up into several bids, those kind of things um change, so there's a healthy level of contingency at this point.
But that list is over, is a good fifty million dollars?
Correct.
Just, just this list of improvements?
Correct.
It's a good fifty million?
A good fifty.
A good fifty.
Are you sure it's not a bad one, James?
Uh, yes.
It's, it's better than the CSO work that needs to be done, but.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the, the uh cost that we have in here for INI, or I'm sorry, there is not a cost that I have provided in here in this table. Later on in the report, there is a cost that we provided for um INI abatement. So if you were to go in and line the entire thing, um, which I think is on the thirty million dollar range too, so. Um. So not, not cheap improvements, uh, but potentially necessary for, for future uh service. Um, let's see, the second one would be improvement two was the um, the installation of that uh equalization there that we talked about upstream of Gunnison. Um, we would also wanna improve the Gunnison flow regulator, so as you reduce INI in the system, so remember that, keep that in mind, we, we included a reduction of INI in, across the board for this system. So as you reduce that, that's gonna alleviate some of the flow uh and capacity that you would need downstream of this area.
Is there a percentage of uh reduction?
Mm-hmm, yes. So uh fifty percent would be what we would need to see in order for these improvements that we've re- suggested to work for the areas that have already been separated. The areas that have not been separated, um, it's a little bit easier to get that percentage reduction, so we, we suggested ninety percent reduction. But that's, like I said, if you take every storm sewer, uh, sorry, storm inlet off of the combined sewer, you're gonna remove a high amount of that peeking flow just easily off the bat. Um, but trying to catch some of these nicks and cuts, um, that might be in your syst- well, that are probably in your system, um, takes a little bit of moment.
Probably, honey, they are.
They are.
They're all over our system.
Yes, yes, so. So uh, it would alleviate the flow then, so that would allow you to take some of these flow regulators that are trying to utilize the equalization and allow more flow through. Um, so you're just increasing capacity then for all of these locations that we talked about previously. Um, so for uh three, four, uh, three and four, that would be adjusting those flow regulators to increase capacity, which are um slightly smaller priced tanks. Um, we would need an additional equalization tank upstream of the market lift station to allow for um, to uh address the additional flows that are gonna be coming down to eliminate those SSOs. And also increasing that market lift station capacity and taking it to the plant. Alright. To accommodate that future planned growth, um, down here in the corner, we suggested increasing that uh trunk sewer to twenty-four inch. Again, this is, this is high level, so um if, if necessary, if you could, if the f- uh growth happens in a different pattern and um, there's another route that could be taken, you know, maybe it comes in and ties in a little higher on the, the food chain than where we have it tying in, then that could be addressed as well, but at this point, we tied it into the closest trunk line that we could and that was the issue that presented itself. Um. Additional capacity would be needed at the treatment plant, um, with the increased uh lift station capacity at market and the increased la- lift station capacity at south. We would need to increase the, the wastewater treatment plant capacity as well, just the peak flow. Um, so a- and with that, there's a number of things that you can do. That, there are some efficiencies that they plant that could be done. Uh, not enough to necessarily reach that thirty million gallons uh per day that we would need. Um, but we have been fortunate lately that it seems like like using a lot of qualifiers here, but uh that peak flow treatment might be a possibility, which is a less expensive way to treat that first flow that would be hitting your treatment plant. Um, it would be a package unit that could be installed at the plant and then blended um at the end of the treatment plant. It's much better for um the treatment plant because it allows your bugs to see a consistent food source um by not washing them out with all this extra flow. Uh, it also is cheaper than upsizing your entire system or providing a lot of EQ at the treatment plant. So this is something that we would hope by the time you get to that point, um, will be in wide use, so.
And you hope because this hasn't been officially allowed to do blending, but DN- DNR hasn't officially approved that, but it is something that there is case law to allow it.
There is case law to allow, um, an anti-dag has been approved for Indianola, which is the first step in that process. So um, Indianola is kind of blazing a trail right now for, for a lot of uh folks within the state. And um, once that's designed and up and running and they can see the effectiveness of that treatment, it will be a lot more widely accepted once it's approved, so. It's used in other locations other than Iowa, so.
It's uh, uh, used effectively, I mean the.
Yes. I mean, the water that you, the water that Indianola, for instance, sees at their treatment plant um during high rain events, and they're not a combined system. Uh, they are a normal um sanitary sewer system that has fallen apart, if you will. Uh, they have, they have water that is cleaner than what is required to be discharged. So the, the water that's coming into their treatment plant meets their effluent limits technically, um, because of how clean that water is. So adding this peak flow treatment is a, is a um beneficial, it's going to help remove um the nasty things that you don't want in there, but it's definitely going to clean the water up enough that it would not impact the treatment.
So, and I, and I guess it doesn't come in super on this plan, but as we get to wherever the summary is on the, the full CIP plan for what we're looking to do over the course of the next forty or fifty years, uh, you haven't built in the idea of increasing the plant's treatment capacity size to a large enough extent to handle the whole system. And to some extent, you're hoping that you're gonna be able to address a lot of that issue through this other alternative process.
Correct, correct, yes, so. Um, and, and you guys, I, I was gonna mention too, you guys are in a very beneficial spot being next to the river because the river um has a lot more capacity to accept load that the DNR would be much more favorable to putting a peak flow treatment in a, a location along a river like here than necess- necessarily in, in Indianola, which has to go through a few waterways to get to a, a major river, so. Um, so for, from your perspective, that's a good thing, so. Uh, let's see, um.
Don't they call that dilution solution?
I didn't say that, I did not say that.
Yeah, but you were thinking.
I remembered Don telling that.
He was thinking it.
Uh okay. Uh we would also recommend installing a EQ upstream of south to help with some of the additional flow that would be coming in from um from the south there, so your south lift station wouldn't have to be increased as much. The alternative would be to increase the south lift station, remove that equalization, and then increase your peak load at the treatment plant. So lots of alternatives there. This is going to get you in the ballpark of the cost that would be needed.
Lauren, the more you talk, the more I'm seeing dollar signs.
I know, I know, and I apologize for that, but it's kind of the nature of uh the world that I live in. Um and what we've what we've worked with the the staff here is to to try and come up with a way that's affordable according to your current.
I don't think we've come up with that, though.
Oh, it's affordable if you spread it out far enough, right? So we've uh we've gotten to that point.
By the time you're eighty-seven.
Have we got to that point?
So part of what we've done with this and the tasks that we've charged uh HR Green as we've gone through this, I mean, we have a we're under a mandate right now to have the CSO work done by twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-five. With uh with with a a design uh cost estimate in the hundred and fifteen million range, including engineering fees. Uh maybe a tad higher than that. Uh we can't afford to do a hundred and fifteen million dollars work in the next five years.
Yep.
And even even if we and and that's did not taken into account, these are all this is, we wanted HR Green to come up with, what are the other system needs that we have that we have been putting off for the last
Right.
twenty years to work on CSO work? And how do we go into DNR in a way that says we need to focus on these other things because they are just as important as the CSO work is? Uh but recognizing the fact that the C- that DNR isn't gonna let us not take a fairly aggressive stand towards getting stuff done. If, you know, we they have to see that we're we're pushing uh in getting this in getting this done, or they're gonna mandate that we stick very close to our schedule.
Right. So our the the what we're trying to do here is show you what needs to be done to make all of the water flow to the plant. Um but we need to give you guys a ballpark estimate for costs, so you can go to the DNR and say, this is not, it's not realistic for us to ignore the other issues, not that not that the issues have been ignored, but prioritize the CSO removal and not have the money to address some of these other issues.
Well, uh here's my here's my thing. You know, because that's the message, but everybody's having to face this. How come how come they're not getting the message? How come they don't understand? Because uh twenty twenty-five doesn't sound realistic, James. I mean, you know, it it sounds uh it sounds crazy. And we're not the only community, so I mean, I you know, what's it going to take for for them to get the message that?
Oh, they're they're willing to work with us, but this is setting the this is all about setting the groundwork for how do we get them to work work with us.
It's about the it's it's about, right, it's about the assumption that we're going to be proactive on it.
Yeah.
And then the work.
So so for instance, your original consent order was set for two thousand seven, right, to have the CSOs removed by two thousand seven? Is that correct?
Uh no, I think that's when we originally entered it and we had a twen- essentially a twenty, about twenty years to to do all of the work.
Oh, okay.
To finish with the EQ basins are due by twenty twenty-eight.
Fifteen.
Yeah, 'cause we did get it extended. It's we had to have it done by twenty twenty-five originally.
Yeah, so it's been it's been extended before and they're they're willing to work with you because, I mean, they understand that it's.
But we're gonna go in and ask them to do something they've never done before for a timeframe.
True, true.
So please be understand that what we're setting here, we're and we need to get through this information uh and and give you an idea of the overall overall scope of what we're trying to get accomplished. But if they buy onto this, this we're gonna be the first community that they've bought onto this with.
Right, right.
There's ten promising words right here on page six. This may result in significant so- cost savings to the city, so when they do these evaluations, it may not be as bad as it previously appear. I'm trying to look for a glimmer of hope in all this.
So yeah, so like I mentioned earlier, there's a healthy amount of contingency in here, um just because uh the what we've looked at is high level and it's overall estimations in today's dollars.
Yeah, you said you estimated on the high side.
Yes.
And and I apologize, I've gotten us into details sooner than we probably should be.
You're fine.
For where you're going, because you need to get through the 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 whole presentation to really get the where does this put us and and where do where do we go from here?
Right, right. Yep, so so these are just the the ideas that if I had all the money in the world, if you had all the money in the world, uh what you could do to make all of the water go to the treatment plant and then be treated in some fashion before being discharged. And it's expensive, uh but it's just an idea of all of the things that you could do. We will prioritize these based on what's the most important um to and and we'll get into that a little later. About what's the most important environmentally, what's the most important for um functionally, uh and and what you guys can do to get along as you're going through, so. Uh then the last alternative was scenario six, in which uh we took that proposed improvement of the additional EQ upstream of Gunnison and pumped it down to um the Market Street Lift Station, essentially, well, not all the way there, uh halfway, and then gravity fed to the Market Street Lift Station. Ultimately, this alternative is determined not to be the most um beneficial uh because you lose some of the capacity here in your already constructed Gunnison tank. So we we didn't look at this alternative very much further. For the cost that it was gonna incur, it was not as beneficial as would have been hoped um with the additional flow going straight to the Market Street Lift Station. All right, so for Masl sewer improvements, um all of the costs that we're gonna, so we're getting into the improvements now that we would recommend. Uh we'll get into the costs and the recommended schedule. So the um the sewer improvements for Masl, we assumed full separation similar to the separation tactics that we're using in Locust. Slight uh little bit more expensive, but hopefully more effective at removing I N I um and and getting those flows down to a more reasonable uh number. Uh lining existing sanitary pipes, lining or replacing brick manholes, uh reusing that combined sewer as storm sewer as opposed to continuing to use it as sanitary sewer. And then installing a new sanitary sewer to replace the old combined sewer alongside of the combined sewer that will be used as storm sewer, so. Just again, very similar to what we're doing in Locust. Uh in Hawkeye, we um suggested inflow and infiltration abatement. Um the improvements to the flow regulators, a debt adding additional EQ, um like I mentioned before, at the Market Street Lift Station. And then the trunk sewer improvements along Highway sixty-one down in this area. Cascade improvements would be uh I N I abatement also, um the south street lift station improvements. Uh increasing flow to remove uh SSOs, possibility of SSOs. Um new gravity sewer along Main Street here, um four new residential lift stations. A new cascade lift station and EQ at Cascade uh at the ca- Cascade list, the proposed Cascade Lift Station. So the lift station improvements here um would just be the lift station, so these are just specifically at the lift station. These are not looking at force main or um sanitary sewer f- uh flowing into it. Um the Market Street Lift Station would be the most expensive, but also the most critical um as the SSOs, a a good portion of the SSOs that are occurring are upstream of the Market Lift Station. This uh includes moving the Market Lift Station um within the general vicinity of the current location. There's been talk about moving it further inland and away from the river, but we didn't have a concrete feel on where that might go, and so that cost is not included in here. But um in general, this is a similar proximity where it's currently located. Um and uh necessary piping to get it to that new location. Um South Street Lift Station would be a replacement lift station in the same general vicinity. Uh Fourteenth would be your replacement, again, in the same general li- uh vicinity and so on and so forth down here. As you can see, um these are listed in the same order, thank you very much, in the same order as um what we had talked about before with the um ranking scale of what's in the worst condition and what needs to be in uh prioritized, so. Uh the first three are the ones that are highest priority and not necessarily the highest cost, but close to. Um Silver Street would be the next highest cost there that would need to be rehabilitated. So again, these rehabilitations are um lower cost, but things that would be necessary just to keep up with uh additional um SCADA. Um making it a little bit easier for Dawn to take care of them, making sure the site security is up to date and uh on par with what the DNR would be requesting. But also lower on the priority scale, so they would be pushed out a little further. Uh the wastewater treatment plant improvements that we included in the CIP were increased to the peak flow capacity, which would be on the order of um adding the peak flow treatment unit or two at the treatment plant and then blending out the the effluent side of the treatment plant. Um nutrient reduction improvements, and you'll see when we get to the C of CIP, we've pushed that off further than what um maybe the DNR had currently requested, um but trying to prioritize keeping the sanitary sewer system in better uh situation. Um and then addressing the nutrient reduction in the future. And then also a solid handling, uh solids handling improvements. So based on your current budget for the sanitary sewer system, which is approximately three million per year. Um this is the the project schedule that we um and the city work together to to come up with. Uh including prioritization based on what the city sees as important and um needs for the sewer system. Uh twenty sixty-eight is when that would be then uh completed at that current rate.
At twenty sixty-eight?
Instead of twenty twenty-five.
Instead of twenty twenty-five.
I'll be sixty in twenty sixty-eight. I was just waiting for somebody to say something.
I'm not saying anything.
She's like, aren't you sixty now?
Makes you younger than me, that works, that's okay.
Please continue.
Oh.
So with this, even this schedule, uh when what we looked at was, we we know what our operating costs are for the plant. Looked at escalation of what what are those costs gonna be moving forward? We looked at our annual equipment purchases that we have for uh Don purchase purchases an average amount annually. Uh Chris with the sewer system has a his own capital equipment purchase needs that he builds in. Uh we know that we have plant improvements that have to occur on an annual ongoing basis, just to to make su- make sure that the system stays functional.
Right.
So we build all those capital needs in. We took a look at, if we do three percent rate increases on an annual basis moving forward, what can we capitalize within that with the using a lot of the state revolving loan funds or just or revenue bonds? Um what can we make cash flow over the long term uh on a on a cycle that we didn't backload debt too much? Um so this this is a schedule that we can by and large hit out of sewer revenue. I think that we built in um doing one project out of TIF financing and then in the tune of about ten million dollars worth of capital improvements there as well. And you can just about do it on this timeframe, so and all of these are things that need done over this timeframe and and we these are known needs that we that we can identify fairly easily now. Uh you don't have, if you look through, as you go through the list, there is some work down at the wastewater treatment plant. But a wastewater treatment plant does not typically go without a major overhaul uh forty years. And you don't see that listed on the schedule yet.
Right.
So this, even even though it includes an awful lot, I I don't know what the total is on this, maybe a hundred and seventy million, somewhere in that neighborhood. It still doesn't include everything that really will end up having to come into play over the long haul.
Because that, yeah, because the wastewater treatment plant is gonna have to be addressed.
Well, you're gonna have other breakdowns too.
So this is and that's but that's something that we wanna make sure that you you
Right.
you all understand. Um one of the things that I I know that I've heard is we've talked asking for more time to work on CSO or CSO issues. Uh and see and them being flexible working with that, I heard a response, um oh, that means that we don't have to do three percent rate increases. No, it doesn't. It mean we ha- these are other needs that the system is going to, if if we don't address, at some point, we're gonna have a major issue with our whole overall system.
Don't start bringing me down, James.
So to to highlight that fact, we have the sewer separation for the rest of Masl not occurring till nearly twenty forty. So all of these things uh that we've placed ahead of that are things that need to be done that aren't being required by the DNR. These are just things that you need to do to keep up your system. So um so that's just to to highlight kind of what he's saying there is that there's a lot of things that need to be done to keep the treatment and the the conveyance working properly. Um and yes, it is a lot of dollar signs that that accompany that.
You get a lot of friends, don't you, Lauren?
I do, I mean, you're done.
Bless your heart.
Um it's not easy giving giving the hard news, right? Um but I think that the current plan and the current DNR and EPA is um uh will work with you. I think this is the climate in which you could uh address a schedule that is not as aggressive as what you had been currently given. Um do I believe that they'll give you to twenty sixty-eight?
I was waiting to hear what her answer was gonna be.
Well, we'll have to see. So uh I don't I don't think they'll go that far, but maybe somewhere in between. Um uh that would be the ideal situation.
We need all the help we can get.
I mean, the other the other issue then that you guys have to address then is how you're gonna pay for that. And at some point, you just can't pay for it, so no matter what they regulate, you're only going to be afford, be able to afford what you can afford. Um and and they're gonna have to keep that in mind when they're coming to you with the plan. So if we had our druthers again and you had all the the money in the world, um we would try to a- approach this all by twenty thirty-six. So uh in addition.
All the money in the world only gets it done in twenty thirty-six?
Twenty thirty-six. Um I mean, you could do it faster if you wanna rip the.
You've got all the money in the world.
Uh so we we would also recommend, um right now you have a a a small emergency, well, it's a it's an I N I uh an emergency repair budget currently, that's about three hundred thousand dollars a year. Right now, because of the age of the sewers, a lot of that is being spent on emergency repairs, at least it has been in the last couple of years. Um so we would recommend somewhere close to five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars a year being set aside for specifically I N I abatement. So addressing those issues um annually systematically, and um you'll see that um in the previous slide, we don't have anything uh on here for um Hawkeye or Cascade I N I abatement. Because they're separated, right? We're just not gonna touch them because as much as we can to us to to put the money where we need it to.
Something, something's on there.
So this money here would be um for Hawkeye and Cascade lining um for those years that you see over in this area, so. This is a it's it's an endeavor, right? It's a lot of dollars to look at and um that's what we would like to go to the DNR and say is, this is what we can afford. We need you to work with us in some some other fashion that doesn't include us bankrupting the town, so. Um the last part of the, just 'cause I don't wanna leave it on a a long note.
Please don't.
Uh.
It's gonna be pretty uplifting, really.
I know, I know. Uh so uh.
It's gonna be major recovery.
Come on, Lauren.
I know, I know, so the fun part is. We can do educational material for the public and see what we can do to work with the public to, to address the issues that are coming from private property. So uh we included educational material, questionnaire, public engagement, um including public meetings. We're setting up some public meetings to talk to the city, uh the, to the citizens. And a lot of um, a, a, a lot of treatment plants uh or operators. Uh estimate that nearly fifty percent of their INI for a non-combin system, so not, not you guys, but non-combin system. Um fifty percent of INI comes from private sources. So uh that's a big deal, and once you guys get separated, that's an issue that you're gonna have to be worried about. And if you're talking about fifty percent of your issues coming from property you can't necessarily legally touch without the, the proper authority. That's an issue, and if you can start on that now and engaging the public and educating the public, that would be a good place to start. Right now, it's easy to do, um get into the schools, talk to the kids. Um there's lots of, lots of ways that um I've seen done with school kids. Teaching their parents how to turn off the water and how much water they can save and setting goals for them and. It's amazing how much information can be disseminated by school kids teaching their parents.
Thanks, Rhonda.
So, oh, there you go. Um the other, uh, the other things would be looking at prohibited connections. So coming up with a system to be more um enforcing on uh. Things like sump pumps or downspouts that are tied into your sanitary sewer. Uh other ways that people have uh addressed private property would be offering service line maintenance. There are insurance companies out there that will uh insure your line and, and help you keep it in service. Um there are cities out there, or I should say authorities out there that will own their own services. Um and maintain their own services because it's just easier, uh and then the homeowner would pay for uh, if they decide to opt into that program. Pay for a nominal fee, so. Alright, see, uplifting.
Didn't quite get there for you.
No?
Counsel, now's the time to quest.
I wish I was a singer, so I could sing and then.
So what, we're, we're gonna be one of the first ones, is I take it that. I mean, what do you think the likelihood is that the DNR? My entire life, it's never paid to be first. Yeah, you know, there's a lot of times when I was first on things and it cost me more money, like the, I was the first kid in my class to buy a Ford Mustang. Spread it out over years, it's affordable. About killed me. Anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, so what's the likelihood that they are actually gonna work with us on this real extended timeframe? Do you have any idea? Have we gotten any feedback from anybody?
So, go ahead.
Well, this is probably gonna be better to come up as a topic as you, uh the next time.
Okay.
So where we are right now is, we're doing a sewer master plan. Uh two weeks from now, we're gonna have another work session on the integrated plan.
Okay.
Uh Leo Foley will be here, I don't know, is Dustin Miller here or no? So we've been working with uh V and K um separately on a much smaller scale than what H R Green has done for this. Um and Dustin Miller, uh an attorney who has some pretty good ties with the DNR. Has already had a lot of conversations with the DNR over what we're trying to accomplish. Uh they do have a desire to do things and be a little bit more flexible and to take a look at a little bit more comprehensive basis. Uh what a community can afford. That being said, how far they're willing to go is a matter of, we'll have to go and see. They, they are very agreeable, amenable to having an extended schedule, it's just how far will they go?
Right.
Well, it would only make sense, I mean, the problem didn't crop up overnight, it's not gonna be fixed overnight, so.
Right.
We just wanna keep doing what we have to do to make sure that we're uh at a position to uh, to make sure that we are on top of that and we get the breaks and we get ideas.
Well, and, and the more effort that you put um towards it and that you are showing that you are consistently moving forward. Even if it is slower than a pace than they would like to see, at least you're moving forward and you're not stalled out, and that's always beneficial.
Do you guys have any other questions for Lauren?
Just probably a question for a future session, I'm interested in what um green infrastructure a community can do to reduce their INI. So probably a topic for another session, but definitely.
It's, I think it's gonna be covered again, is, would this be correct, in two weeks when we talk about integrated plan? And, and, and the genesis for, for, for part of that, you know, we had done in, in some integrated planning with the, some funds from the EPA. Um now their stormwater management goals of what they're trying to accomplish are different than what we would like to see happen. Um and it's, this is something where DNR likes the concept and wants to have a more of a, a full, a more comprehensive look of what the city's needs are. For water, stormwater, sewer, uh street infrastructure. Uh what are the, what are the, all the overall demands that a community has and make sure that we're thinking about them holistically and not just one on, doing one offs. Um stormwater management is part of what we're gonna be using as bargaining chips and what they're willing to consider is. Uh you know, if we're putting money into some stormwater management, they have a little bit more incentive to say, hey, you're. Addressing some of our clean water concerns in a different way than what the CSO is designed to do.
Yep, yep, so the green water infrastructure will help reduce that peak flow that would be seen in the stormwater. So yeah, there's a, there's a definite um possibility that you could um reduce those stormwater flows that are causing the CSOs. Um I don't think we looked at specifically how much you would have to reduce those flows. Or how much green infrastructure would be required to reduce those flows so that you're not having a CSO. Um but there are, you know, there's other unintended consequences that come with green infrastructure. So it would, you have to be looked at on a case by case basis in a certain basin, so.
And, and part of that too is, is we talk about part of the nutrient reduction requirements that we have. How much of that can we address through some stormwater improvements?
Yeah.
Um, 'cause you get some little, you get some level of nutrient phosphate reduction that way as well.
Yep, yep, and there's been towns that um have proposed coordinating with local uh non-point source solutions. So that would be like farmers or runoff from fields and those kind of things. And uh they've looked at it on a stream basis, so saying if you terrace your field, then we can reduce. Uh the amount that we have to actually treat because overall, we're being more beneficial for the, the river. So there are collaborative um ideas that can work like that uh to lessen the cost that the city would have to incur. And be more effective, so.
Anything else, James?
No, I, this, I mean, I would encourage you to take a look at this, it's a hundred pages. And this is, it's, it's trying to look at an awful lot of issues at the same time and thinking about. Uh how do they all fit together and mesh and it's, it's difficult. Um. We will get another blush at this next, at the next work session when you have a different engineer coming up and talking about it from the integrated plan perspective. Um I just, please stay on board with it. This is, these are some huge topics and uh for the day-to-day life that, that people live, you don't think about these things. But these have some of the more major consequences of where we are as a community long term.
Well, I'd, I'd definitely like the more in-depth look at it, 'cause we, before we were just talking se- separation. And there had to be other issues that we need to look at, so I think looking at it from a larger picture is the best way to go, so. Joke, jokes aside.
Yeah, and we gotta have a game plan, we've gotta have a game plan, so uh this gives us a good platform uh to stand on, so. You guys good for now?
And any of you wanna look at it, uh I, I don't know, we have a copy here?
You have three copies.
You have three copies and then the electronic copy will be uploaded to the FTP site.
So as you, as you think through looking at stuff, you, I don't think you have the, any of the maps and ha- even if you did, having them, the color ones come out. As opposed to black and white, you get a better picture of how, how the system works.
Well, that being, that being the obvious.
We'll have one here.
Okay.
Okay, and I can.
Okay.
I can upload that, that electronic copy if that's easy to see.
Yeah, see, all you had in the packet was, was the front end, you didn't have any of the appendixes.
Right.
So I think it's like two thirty-one.
Two hundred and thirty-one.
Hundred at the two thirty-one.
Yeah, the packet was still good though, the packet was still good.
Still more to read through, right?
Yeah, but it was, and a lot more information. Um. We got anything else? We wanna beat uh Lauren up if we don't have to.
Thank you.
I'm pretty fast, I can run. Thank you.
Man, you went through those hundred and twenty pages quick.
I know.
That clicker was really worth it.
Oh, I knew. Thank you.
Yep, uh yeah, have a safe, have a safe ride, uh safe drive. Okay, uh bus free rides.
Uh yep, this is just an update, uh we've done this for the last four year now, four years now, um I have some informational packets I'll pass around. Uh just wanted to kinda brush over what we do, uh we, you know, starting the end of uh school year, beginning of summer. Uh we've, we've given rides to kids uh under the age of eighteen, uh free rides over the summer, um and we'd like to continue to do that. Um you know, the positive gains are on, on, from a financial basis as we get to use those rides uh in future calculations for FTA and STA funding. Uh which we've seen a pretty good, I wouldn't correlate the free rides with the jumps that we've gotten, I think the FTA and STA has increased their overall dollar figures that they've given us. But uh you know, it, it gives kids a way to get around, um I don't know the dollar, the numbers, I didn't put, put a statistic uh sheet together. But just wanted to go over that and yeah, I think Rhonda's up next and she'll talk a lot about uh, you know, kind of the partnering that we do, we take a lot of kids to the library.
I know those bus rides are nice, I know when my kids were younger, my husband took our, our boys. And sometimes parents are a little anxious about their kids riding the school bus for the first time. Go ride the city bus for free and check it out this summer and ease some of those fears and have a good time and check out your city at the same time.
So unless there's any, I guess, protest of doing this, we'll, we'll continue as we've, we've done.
Are we good, Counsel?
Yeah, I'm good.
Great, thank you.
Okay, number five is our summer reading program. Our wonderful librarian.
Well, I appreciate a few minutes tonight to talk about the summer reading program that's coming up. Um we'll be starting next week already, um so you can see our program this year, the theme is space, outer space, you know, universe of stories. Um we get our theme from the same consortium that a lot of libraries throughout the country do, pretty much everyone. You know, the public libraries in Iowa use the same theme, Illinois does their own thing, they have a different theme, but.
We know that.
And so you see, we're gonna run from June third to August third, and it is programs, uh there's actually five programs that complement each other. So there's one for babies, one for kids, one for tweens, another one for teens, and another one for adults, so all ages are covered. Anyone can come and participate in a, a summer reading program. Um we've been doing this for a long time in Burlington, I had someone cut to me this weekend and say how much he enjoyed coming as a kid and looked forward to it every year. And then took his kids and now he's, you know, the age of having grandkids. Um and so a lot of people are familiar in some sense with what the, the program is and what we do. Um but I'll give you a little overview, I gave you some handouts um before the meeting, it's your place there, I'll refer to a few of those as we go to. Oh, and before I forget, we are trying something a little new this year, we're gonna do a pre-registration day, so. Usually that first day of summer reading, there can be a bit of a line to get registered, we've been working on that every year, um simplifying and doing things a little differently. Um but this year, this Friday, May thirty-first, we're all gonna have our desk open all day just to come in and pre-register. Um fill out the paperwork and get, get kids signed up or adults can come in and sign up then too, they want. So right now, we're at that time where I think there's a few kids that are done with school, some are getting out this week, some even go till next week. Um but a lot of kids anticipating school being out for the summer, um and even as, as old as I am, I remember that anticipation, how exciting it was. Um to be off for the whole summer, but it tended not to take too long before I would end up being one of these kids who was saying, ah, I'm bored. Um so one of the things that summer reading does is to help families have a little something to do in the summer. Um they say boredom can be good, it uh gives you a chance to be resourceful and creative, but. You know, a parent knows too much boredom is, is too much, so um we try to um provide very full calendars of activities for the summer. For um the free fun things, um most of them involve some kind of educational component as well. Uh we try to keep it fun and light and have things specific for different age groups, so. Um depending on what your kids are and come to the different events that we have, um and we do have things for all ages. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out that are newer for us. Um a couple of times in June and then again in July, we have on those Friday afternoons, mini makers. And um the reason we're able to do this one is because we earlier this year got an award from the state. Um for STEM activities and that award gave us staff training, um as well as a whole lot of goodies. So we got a lot of different kits and, and tools and things that we're able to use. So mini makers is for um two-year-olds um through six-year-olds. And so they'll be doing pre-coding kind of activities and building and. Um several different things related to science, technology, engineering and math. And it's at one o'clock um at the same time as our crate club, which is a similar thing for um seven-year-olds. Through um about twelve, thirteen-year-olds. So we're hoping that this will be a chance for families to have their older kids go to one thing while their little kids can go to something else at the same time. Um and the crate club again is something we're able to do because of another award we got from the state for STEM activities.
Good job.
And it's our second year to get that one for that age group. Um and so that, that came with anything from, we have a sewing machine now, we have a three D pen, just kinda like a three D printer, but more manual than that. She just used a pen, um all a bunch of stuff that we got. So we got all of that last year and we got the award, and then we got the award again this year, so we're still waiting for all that fun stuff to come in.
Sweet.
Um so we'll keep building on that. Another thing on Thursday afternoons is the collaboratory, and that also is gonna make use of all these different great kits and tools that we've been getting. And that kids can come in and there'll be stations set up um for them and it's third grade and up. Um little younger kids could come if they had a parent with them to help them through some of the activities. Um but it's an open time for those three hours for them to come in and try out all these different kinds of things that we have. You also see on the calendar, I mean, you have this calendar inside the newsletter, it's the pull-out um in there I gave you. But you'll see other things like wiggle time and baby garden, which are things we have year-round. Um but we also like to highlight those during the summer, 'cause we tend to pick up people that don't come during the rest of the year, just don't have that kind of time. So it's a nice chance to bring them in and, and see what we have to offer. Tuesday afternoons, we have our bigger events, so like puppet shows, the magic show, highlighted off to the side here. Um July, we have Blank Park Zoo, we have them come twice because um it's always very well received. Um they bring live animals, so that's fun. The insect zoo also brings live animals, I don't know, the last time I remember the insect zoo being here, they had a cockroach you could hold, it's not my thing, not my thing. But um but I don't know what they're bringing this year, um that kids can see, but they will have live insects. Um so our Tuesday afternoon programs particularly, um some of our other ones as well though. The city's um day camp comes to those, the Y has its camps come, different daycares come. So um we tend to get a hundred or more people, sometimes several hundred, um who come to those shows and um. But I say, those camps also make use of some of these other activities that we have too, and they'll come for the bees readers or um any of the other kind of things that we have. So we're happy to be able to coordinate with them um and make that possible for them to, to use all of, you know, if we're gonna bring a programmer in, we wanna get as many people as possible to see it. And just a few other things that we have going, um the Star Lab, if you go to our Facebook page, you can see a video of when they tried it out. They decided to build their own, so a couple of staff members with a lot of plastic, duct tape and a fan. Built a Star Lab that you can actually crawl into and make your constellations and see those, so I'm looking forward to uh seeing how that one goes for them. I got to see it when they were testing it out and it was fun. Um so I say, one aspect of summer reading is that lessening of boredom for kids. Um and just offering those fun, free things for kids to do. Um and I should also point out on that calendar, there's a lot of things for adults too. So um take a look at, at those, and one of the handouts you have on the back of the sponsors highlights um some of the programs for adults.
Shane is interested in the bad art tonight.
Yeah, I would be great at that one myself, um but yeah, that, that, lots of different fun things like that would be going on for y'all this.
Everybody's a Weisenheimer.
The thing that I um think is probably the most important, more serious reason why we do um summer reading. Is what this handout, which you have a copy of, highlights, and I really liked how this, how they brought it all together on this handout, lots. Lots of different statistics that I think are really important for us to, to know about. One of them on here is that fifty-two percent of parents with kids in the age of six to seventeen don't know what summer slide is. I hope you do, 'cause I think I talk about it every year when I come up here, um, but I'll talk about it a little bit more too. Um, but also this shows us a little bit here about what are the monetary impact and the time impact in schools in the fall when kids come back and have lost, um, skills. And that's one of the other statistics up here that, um, two to three months are lost of reading and math skills over the summer when kids stop reading and don't continue to be learning throughout that whole time, so. Um, as I say, you can see the, that what they say, the kind of the effects are at the other end of the summer. And they also, right in the middle there, talk about how two to three hours a week is what's needed to keep up skills, um, so to prevent that loss, but also to, to continue to gain skills, um, can happen over the summer too. So our reading incentive programs for those different age groups are all designed to help families reach that goal of having two to three hours a week, um, and different prizes they get each week for doing that. One of the things we changed over the last couple of years is we no longer have just levels, we had some kids, you know, some kids just love to read. Um, and so they would finish all the levels in the first few weeks, 'cause they would just read through everything. Now we do it week by week, so you could get one prize a week, you reach that goal for the week, keep reading if you want to, but come back the next week. So you wanna keep kids reading all summer, not just getting this all done in a short time.
Rhonda, you have some really cool prizes too, so can you just allude to what a couple of those are?
Right, yeah, we do a lot of different things, and I'll, I'll talk about the sponsors at the end, but a lot of what we're able to do is because of the sponsors. So, one of them that kids always love are the pool passes, so we're always really grateful for the pool, um, donating those each year. Uh, but we also get things like Arby's curly fries and just, you know, different things like that, so a lot of food prizes from local businesses, um, and then also the, um, sort of activity prizes too that we have, so. Yeah, and I, I know like the teens have some different gift cards they can win, so they try to make the, the prizes age-specific. Um, now I will say, last year, we had a theme that, um, was more musical, and there were cowbells and other noisy things that some parents didn't love. We don't have anything like that this year, nothing, no big noise makers that kids are gonna come home with, but. Um, so summer slides, I've talked about it, um, in the past, it's that loss of skills over the summer. What I wanted to point out on here though is that statistic that says that two-thirds of the achievement gap at the ninth grade is because of summer learning loss. So it's not kids who, you know, it's not all about ability, a lot of it has to do with opportunity. And so kids who don't have the opportunity in the summer to continue reading or do these learning activities are falling behind, um, just from that, from the summer loss. It's not, it's not all of it, but it is a huge piece of it, um, so we don't, we don't want that for our kids in our community, which is part of why we offer this. And I say, it's sort of like a chutes and ladders game, you get, you get two kids who are going along through the school year, working hard at the same level. One of them in the summer gets that, you know, slide, that chute, because they don't keep up the learning, the other one has the ladder. Um, then they come back to school and they keep both working hard, and the next summer, the same thing. The one who keeps falling behind can never catch up, you know, it's.
That's true.
And, and it's just, um, again, I, I think that's why it's so important to, to know that it's not, that achievement gap isn't all about effort, it isn't all about um, ability, a lot of it has to do with not having the opportunities in the summer. And this is just another way, um, to show that, how quickly kids can fall behind, this is just kindergarten, first grade, second grade. By third grade, a child who keeps losing skills and have to regain at the next fall is already a year behind. Um, and you know, one of the other, um, things that we've seen on these before is that a third grader who can't read at grade levels is four times less likely to graduate. So, the things that we're doing for these little kids in our community really have a big impact, um, on their lives, that, you know, their adult quality of life is is, um, impeded by the fact, um, that they don't have those opportunities, so we wanna provide those, um, to kids in the community. Uh, the one other statistic on here, two years is the equivalent in combined summer learning loss for every student by the time they reach middle school, so it really builds up over the years. So we wanna keep it fun, um, and we want kids to come in and participate in all those activities, but we also wanna really give them those incentives to keep reading and keep learning, um, as they go.
Now Rhonda, do they have to sign up at the library, or is it bookmobile, will, will that work too?
Yeah, actually, I think, yeah, there it is, my next one. Um, so, this year, un- unfortunately, as you know, the school district is doing a lot of moving. Um, we have for the last several years had a vehicle from the school district. Um, it's got a wrap on, it says bookmobile, and it still has that, um, but they're gonna use that this year, um, with moving classrooms all over, um, with course closing and all those other things going on, so we don't have that vehicle this year. So instead, we're calling it a bookmobile, it's gonna be part of our pop-up libraries, which is something we've been doing anyhow. I mean, we go to the farmer's market, um, every Thursday night, we have our pop-up library there. Um, but this summer, we're gonna add more locations, as you heard, um, Mr. Moore mention, we've talked to him about coming to those, um, block parties on Thursday nights as well. Um, and one of the other things that we, um, done with the bookmobile in the past, and will continue to do on a little smaller scale and in our, uh, little minivan that we have access to, um, is go to places where kids are. So last year, we had worked out really well that we were able to go to the city's camp at Perkins Park, um, and offer the services there. Um, I said, a lot of times those kids come to the library with the group as well, but this is another way to reach out to them. And the Y is very excited that this year we're adding them, so we'll be going to their, um, hub at James Madison and offering, we'll be bringing materials, and kids can sign up for summer reading there, participate, um, if they're not able to get to the library, they'll still be able to do those things. Yeah, and, and I guess just, um, just wanna add how excited we are that we're continuing to offer the free bus rides for kids, um, because transportation is a barrier for some kids to get to the library, so that's why we try to go out as much as we can to community events, um, with our pop-up library, and hopefully then we'll get the bookmobile back next year, but, um, but being able, knowing that we can promote to the kids, that they can take those bus rides for free, that's really valuable. The other thing I said we could do, so we're, we're fighting that boredom, we're fighting that summer slide, um, reducing those things, but we're also highlighting what the library does, and in the summer, a lot more people are able to participate in library events. So we always hope that as they come and discover wiggle time, baby garden, maybe they'll continue throughout the year, um, or come to some of our other programs, um, throughout the year, or just continue to, to come to the library and use their library card. We get a lot of new library accounts, um, as soon as summer reading starts. And I just wanna say how important it is that we have these great sponsors, so, um, as I mentioned, Arby's will do, um, curly fries, Happy Joe's will do pizzas. So some of these are in-kind gifts, um, and others of those, um, are monetary gifts. Kenny's Roller Ranch always gives us passes, and so there's a lot of fun thing, activity things kids can do, um, as well, thanks to these sponsors and this whole other page of sponsors, so we're, we're really fortunate to have so many people in the community understand why we're doing this and support, um, what we're doing. So that was my quick overview of summer reading, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Another question, I just have a comment, I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job down there, and I, I try to remind everybody again how important the, the reading program is. I, uh, was part of the, uh, of reading program, I think it was just so my mom could get the kids out of the house, you know, so somebody was, but, um, you're, you're right about the slide, and, uh, it's important to be able to understand, if you can, you know, I, I give that message all the time, if you can read, and reading and comprehension skills, if you can read and understand what you're reading, then you can learn it, you know, and, uh, so, uh, good job to the staff, good job, all that you're doing, and, um, I hope, uh, I hope the people that don't have much going on this summer take advantage of that reading program.
Here, here.
Rhonda, one, one statistic that I, that I always, uh, was amazed by was, um, you know, I'm in the Rotary Club, uh, which you are as well, and one of our initiatives is reading, and I heard this in that club, was a child before the age of seven that doesn't read regularly will see eighty-four million less words, see or hear eighty-four million less words before the age of seven. So, I think that's a pretty, pretty significant statistic, uh, given that those are some of the most vital years for development, so.
Right, and that's why we do the program for babies, obviously, it's parents reading to their kids, we wanna really encourage them to do that. Um, we've also added that, um, thousand books before kindergarten program as well in the last year, that that goes year-round to encourage parents to read to their kids and build that vocabulary.
Thanks Rhonda, I love it that we have such a comprehensive program, so they can take the bus, they can go to the school feeding sites and get breakfast and lunch served at Burlington High School in North Hill this summer, and they can also go to the library and feed their minds, so, great comprehensive effort, everybody.
Yeah, our city manager, he must have been part of the reading program, you know, using words like genesis and things like that. Quite interesting tonight, my friend, very interesting, let's keep this thing moving, you really turned it me tonight, man. Did you catch that, Major, did you catch that, uh, the genesis of that, this guy?
I know, we gotta get rid of these cups.
Let's, okay, we save the best for last. Update on Henderson County agreements, fire department, chief.
I am gonna keep this short, unfortunately, when you sit back there for two hours, you just keep thinking, I should mention this, I keep writing notes on this one page, piece of paper out here, so, I, I just wanted to give you a little update on how things work in Henderson County. I get a lot of questions about, oh, I saw your ambulance over there, I saw your fire truck, you know, what are you guys doing over in Henderson County? And I do have an agreement, um, proposing to them on, uh, June eleventh, and so I'll talk about that at the very end after you, I kinda go over what we do over there, so. Um, this is kind of a history, uh, prior to two thousand and four, there was really nothing between Burlington Fire Department and Henderson County, we didn't go over there for fire, EMS, imaginary, well, it's not imaginary, it's the Mississippi River. We didn't go over there and they didn't come over here. And then in two thousand and four, we started doing, uh, ALS ambulance tiers, which meant we met up with their ambulance, so they have a basic life support ambulance, EMT service. They would pick up the patient, if they needed advanced life support, they would call us, we would meet them on the side of the road. We would, our paramedic would get out, take all the needed equipment, hop in the back of their rig and go to, to Great River. And for that, we billed the, the service two hundred dollars, so that started in two thousand and four. Um, that went on for about four years, and that's really all we did, we didn't do any primary ambulance service, we just did the tiers. I should mention, there's five services over there, uh, five BLS services in Henderson County. So sometime around after the two thousand and eight flood, I don't remember if it was in two thousand and eight or after two thousand and eight, we became the primary ambulance service for Gulfport, their fire department ceased to exist, their ambulance service in Gulfport ceased to exist. So we do cover them through the CTA agreement, primary for the city of Gulfport, all the way over to Carman Road, the, the gas station there, that's our boundary, so, any ambulance call in that area, we're, we are the service that goes up there. Not so for fire, we do get a lot of mutual aid calls, uh, for fires or whatever happens in that area, but primary ambulance is just, is in Gulfport. Um, some of these are just guesses, 'cause stuff has happened, say slowly over time, we started going over there more and more, so sometime around two thousand and ten, we started getting asked to be the primary service, so, they would page a service over there, just, I'm gonna pick one at random, say O Quaca. They would page O Quaca ambulance service for a call, O Quaca couldn't come, they would move on to Gladstone, they couldn't get an ambulance, they'd move on to Bigsville, couldn't get an ambulance, eventually, they would just call over and say, hey, can you respond to this ambulance call? And it was getting to be some really long page-out times for them, and some, somewhere, two thousand and twelve, thirteen, they kinda got a protocol together where they would page the service that's responsible, just say O Quaca again, the call's in O Quaca, they would page their ambulance service, after three to five minutes of paging them, if nobody went en route, they would move on to the next closest service, which would be, say Gladstone, and then they would also page us at the same time, 'cause we're like, don't wait till twenty minutes into this, and, and we'd go all the way to O Quaca, and we'd be forty minutes till somebody got on scene, so. At that time, you know, sometime in the, that, we started doing that occasionally, and that's kind of picked up over the years where we get asked more and more to be the primary. Um, and those are different than the tiers in that we bill the patient directly for those calls. Uh, we also, in, I think in twenty thirteen or fourteen, we agreed to, well, we didn't agree, we increased our price for the tiers from two hundred to three hundred, which is about the average amount we were getting at the time for any ambulance calls, uh, the bill, between the different types of insurance and non-payers. You could just figure on average three hundred, so, always started billing that. Um, sometime in that timeframe, early, you know, twenty ten, eleven, twelve, we started getting asked once in a while for a fire call. And so you'll see us, every, not very often, we do have mutual aid agreements over there, we'll go for grass fires, a structure fire now and then, but not a lot, but we do go there for a lot with our fire engines is, uh, motor vehicle accidents, so. I was just looking, in twenty eighteen, we had twenty-seven motor vehicle accidents over in Henderson County, so the worst ones that we go to, seem like they're all over there on Highway thirty-four, that's just a bad stretch of highway, so, uh, they, they do call us, pretty much if they have a bad wreck on, on, uh, thirty-four, they just call us for mutual aid. Um, uh, two, twenty thirteen, we had one, uh, one hundred and eleven calls in Henderson County. Twenty eighteen, we had two hundred and eighty-eight calls to Henderson County, so, if you looked at all their, their ambulance services, we had more calls than any one of those services, which, we took about half of the ambulance calls we were called over there for. Uh, forty-three times we were called and then canceled en route because of that protocol. They would call us early and then maybe, okay, Gladstone now says they're gonna take the call, so they would just call us off and just, uh, cancel our response, which was, was good, we just didn't wanna wait the twenty minutes to get notified. Um, twenty nineteen, so, so far this year, we've had a hundred and five calls. Uh, twenty eighteen, just, just going back there, just to look, in total, we had three hundred, I'm sorry, for EMS calls, we had two hundred and thirteen, forty-three canceled en route, we had a gas leak, we had, like I said, twenty-seven motor vehicle accidents, and then a couple other, uh, smoke call and no incident found, so, by and large, the, the, the most that we go over there is for EMS, so um, about twenty-four calls a month. Uh, during the CTA negotiations, one thing that got brought up a lot was, well, you know, we'll just, we'll just stop, not, not a lot of people brought this up, but a few people said, well, why would we pay you when Henderson County's getting the service for free? Basically, for the ambulance service, but we, what we do over there now is not the same as we do for West Burlington, Danville. We, we are the primary, when there's a call there, we go, over in Illinois, we're the secondary, so they have to page the primary service first, and then we're the secondary, uh, call. So basically, based on that, that's the agreement that I approached them with, I did have a meeting, uh, with two of the supervisors. There are county supervisors, like eleven people over there versus Duane County's three, so, a lot more people. Uh, we proposed a four dollar per capita, which is just a little more than half the per capita we get from the CTA, so that would, that would be an additional, around, somewhere around twenty thousand dollars a year that they would pay us, uh, for service, to be the second ambulance call to the call, so in addition to billing the patient or the tiering fee that we get, depending on what type of call we would get, twenty thousand dollars a year, so. That's the agreement, they seemed very favorable to that, the two that we talked to, so, that's on June eleventh that we have that agreement with them then, so.
Good job.
Any questions on how things work in Henderson County?
Do we build in for anything we get called off on, on the way there? So, okay, but it sounds like the, the four dollars per capita would cover any of those costs. Okay.
We good? Uh, chief. Good job. Appreciate the work. Okay, before we wrap it up, Tisdale, anything? How you feeling?
Not too bad.
How's the throat?
Better.
Who asked you? Peanut butter.
Just, uh, remind everybody that there's some fun events coming up, the summer reading program. Sign up for swimming, if you want your kids to take swimming lessons, I think there's an opportunity, starting to fill, session one. Um, I can't remember, Juneteenth's coming up, what else, guys? Go ahead, take it away.
Take it away, counselor?
I don't know what the, the other events coming up, but I do have one thing, we need to get rid of these cups. We're gonna ruin this table, and then we're gonna get in trouble for replacing the table. These cups leak like crazy, so I don't know if they're old or what, but every one of them's leaking.
We got a bad batch.
First the shares, now the cups.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir, MPT?
Um, not too much, just the, the bees are back in town this week.
Double header tomorrow.
Exciting.
'Cause they canceled their game tonight.
Oh, did they? So when does it start, five?
Uh, you know, I don't know any of that, but I could probably figure it out.
Well, so, there's that, and then, um, of course, more, more, uh, kids are getting out of school, so we gotta watch, watch for the kids, but still beware that some are still in school for the school zones. Um, and then of course, the farmer's market, and hopefully it'll stay dry, I don't know. I don't know, I think it's supposed to rain till the end of time, but I think it's raining right now. That's all I have.
You're correct, it is five o'clock tomorrow.
Okay.
Counselor.
Uh, I'm good, I apologize for running late, a meeting that I couldn't miss that.
It's quite all right sometimes, thanks, Haley.
Ran quite a bit later than I expected.
Assistant City Manager Nick Gregor.
'Cause we're about ready to get hit by a pretty good storm.
Yes.
Uh, we started doing some HESCO work today, uh, projected crest at twenty-two, five. So you'll see some of the same stuff that we had up earlier.
Is that, is that higher than it was a couple of weeks ago?
No. Twenty-three, six, May fourth.
Close. Okay, thanks.
City manager.
I'll be gone next week, you're gonna be gone next week.
Yes.
So would it be possible to switch weeks for radio?
Certainly.
So who would be available to do that next Wednesday? The fifth? Or whatever the date is.
What is that, is that the?
Wednesday, the fifth, it's called June fifth?
Nine o'clock. So you got a couple of you that can do it?
I can do it for sure. I'll fi- I'll figure it out, well, I'll tell, uh, Hexamore, we're gonna switch it.
Okay.
Okay, no, you're not.
Council chamber upgrade, when you looking to do that? You don't have it scheduled yet? Okay, sometime, hopefully in June. Try to get it done so we don't miss a meeting, but if we, if it takes longer than they, if they run into a snag, we'll have it set to where it would be, I think, a work session that we would have trouble with, with not being able to broadcast as opposed to an actual meeting. That's all I had.
Okay, uh, Happy Memorial Day for all of you that have, uh, veterans in your family. We certainly appreciate all of you. Good night.